Lisa, I think we're on, right?
Not quite on my end. Okay, now we are.
Okay. All right. Welcome back to the April 13th public hearing. We are resuming after our lunch break with item number four, and we'll continue the rest of the hearing items in the order of the agenda. And I will turn it over to Corey Harala to take us through the afternoon items.
Thanks, Sarah. And as noted, the first item we'll see here this afternoon is item number four, LPC 21-06139, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, block 1159, lot 44, 120 Underhill Avenue in the Prospect Heights Historic District. This is a Romanesque Renaissance Revival-style row house designed by William H. Reynolds and built circa 1896, and the application is to construct a rear yard addition.
So are we ready to go?
Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. Richard, you should have control of the presentation, and you may begin.
Richard, you're unmuted. Yeah, you're muted.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Richard Larry, LPC staff. Sorry about that. I'll be presenting this application. The architect, Terrence Hairston, will be here to answer any questions you may have. So this is 120 Underhill Avenue, located on the east side of the block on Underhill Avenue, near the junction with Prospect Place. See, while the scope of work is to demolish a projecting rear bay and to construct a brick-clad rear addition and a metal deck only at the parlor floor. And as you can see from the block plan, while the depth of the parlor floor addition and associated deck will be consistent with the average depth of other rear additions, the majority of row houses at this block do not have rear additions, and the majority of those are only single-story basement additions, which is one of the main reasons why it's here at a public hearing. Here's an axon just showing the scope of work. There is a projecting rear bay that you can see at the rear, which will be demolished. There is an existing rear deck, and then there's an accessory shed underneath the existing deck. And the proposal is to build out a rear addition at the parlor floor with a parlor floor deck and stairs leading down, and the associated shed will remain. Just go back to the block plan. You can see a number of the row houses here in the row do have projecting rear bays. A number have been removed prior to the designation of the Historic District. But about 10 years or so ago, the commission did approve the removal of a projecting bay here at 136 Underhill Avenue. Just to see the front elevation where there's no word proposed, and then the rear elevation. As you can see, the proposal, it's an altered rear bay. It's only at the parlor floor. It does not continue down to the basement floor. And this is a fairly prevalent condition throughout this row. There are three leaded glass transom windows at the rear bay. This is probably one of the few significant elements that are remaining, and these will be salvaged and retained at the rear of the proposed addition. Just to give you a sense of the section and before existing it below and proposed above. A portion of this rear addition and deck will be visible from Prospect Place. There's a break in the building line here where you can see there's a parking space and then a high fence. And then, from a limited vantage point over the fence in association with the secondary facades, you can see portions of the rear deck and the proposed addition. What you see here is the sort of trellis that's been attached to the grandfathered existing wood deck. And this gives you a sense of some of the other rear additions and other projecting bays at the row and their altered conditions. And as you can see here, there have been some grandfathered rear additions you can see at some of the adjacent properties at the basement floor. So this wouldn't be the first proposed rear addition at this row. And just the sense of the, some of the, this is a 136 Underhill Avenue where a rear projecting bay was approved by the commission to be removed and replaced with a deck and a window assembly. And here you can see the leaded glass transom windows, which will be kept and part of the new addition. And I'll pass this on if there's any questions. And Terrence Hairston, the architect, is here to answer them for you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Mr. Hairston, would you like to add anything?
No, I think Richard's pretty much covered the scope of work. One thing I would like to add is that one of the primary reasons we're only proposing a one-story addition at the parlor floor, and we did look at doing a two-story enlargement, which is more typical, is that this lot is a little atypical, is narrower than most lots, and it also has a large projecting bay window in the front, which cuts into what they're allowed to do in terms of maximum floor area and FAR. And the owner's primary concern is that they renovate the parlor floor because they're a retiring couple, and they wish to spend most of their time there. They're putting in a new living room and a powder room at that level. So their concern is access and accessibility. And the garden level will remain a rental unit. It's currently unoccupied.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any other questions? Okay, I think, let's move to testimony. We may have more questions afterwards. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And we will start with anyone who signs up in advance and get to everyone else. And I will turn it over to Anthony Fabre to take us through our speakers today.
Thank you. We have a few signups for this item today, and I will bring in Mary Schuford first. Mary, you should be in the meeting.
Okay, am I in?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Mary Schuford. I'm representing Prospect Heights Neighborhood Development Corporation in the Prospect Heights Historic District. PHNDC finds that the massing of the proposed extension and deck is incompatible with the existing context of surrounding buildings or indeed of any other buildings of which we are aware in the Prospect Heights Historic District. We suggest that a shallow or two-story structure without the need for supporting pillars would be more consistent within the existing context of row houses and would also allow the applicants to use the remaining FAR of their lot. Finally, PHNDC is concerned about the precedent that would be set by allowing the construction of a parlor floor enlargement that is supported by columns. Thank you for the opportunity to submit our testimony.
Thank you. Next up, I will bring in Johnny Graham. John, you should be in the meeting now.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. The VSNY cannot support this proposal, which will require the destruction of an Oriole window, which is not only a special window as defined by the rules, but also a window which is a significant unifying feature in this group of 12 row houses, 120 through 142 Underhill Avenue. The applicant has provided photos of the rear facades of the houses in this row on boards five, six, and seven. Because the row is over 200 feet long, you can't see all 12, but we counted nine which are fully or partially visible. It's a very unified row. On the rear, all but one retain their stucco, historic stucco cladding, corbeled cornice, and one-over-one double-hung windows with arched brick window heads on each of the top two floors. We could see seven which have their Oriole windows on the parlor floor. The Oriole at 120 Underhill retains more of its original features than any of the others. Not only does it have its three stained glass transoms, but it also has its original cornice shown on board seven. And on the interior, the original wood trim around the double-hung windows and transoms is shown also on board seven, though the interior details are not, of course, regulated. The applicant has provided photos of two houses in the row, numbers 136 and 138, which do not have Oriole windows. We don't know if these two buildings never had them or if they were replaced before designation in 2009. However, we did a permit search for these two buildings, checking all the permits issued since 2016, and found that neither has received a permit to do window work on the rear facade at the parlor floor, although 138 did get a permit to replace one-over-one double-hung windows at the rear. Therefore, we request the commission not to consider the windows at 136 and 138 as a precedent and to deny this proposal to alter the rear facade at 120. This view is endorsed by the Art Glass Forum, New York, an organization founded in 2000 and dedicated to scholarship about glass, including stained glass windows. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, I will bring in Kelly Carroll. Kelly, you should be in the meeting now.
I am. Let me just get my video. There we go. Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. HTC appreciates the reincorporation of the stained glass transoms, and the addition to the home is modest. However, as discussed in recent weeks regarding the LPC's regulation of the Gansburg Market Historic District, precedent can alter the pristine until ultimately a precedent of alterations presides. Here, there is a visible rear row of homes with a uniform bade vocabulary. We ask that the LPC weigh this context and its propensity for precedent of every bay on the block for which this, as the first building in the row, will sit. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any other signups, and there are also no other hands raised for this item.
Can I make one final comment?
Yes, I'm going to come back to you in a minute for a response. Okay, thank you. And just before we do that, Rich, can you let us know if there was any written testimony in addition to the speakers today?
Yes, we did receive a letter from Brooklyn Community Board 8, and they voted to withhold support of the application.
Okay. So Mr. Hairston, please go ahead. Feel free to respond to any comments you've heard, and if you wish to speak about the community board, that's fine as well.
Well, this isn't a response to the community board committee hearing. And so in response to that, the owner did contact his immediate neighbors, and they submitted an affidavit to the record in support of the project.
Okay. All right. Would you like to respond to the other comments about this rear facade and its relationship to the row? Do you see that relationship from the street?
It's sort of, as Richard mentioned in the initial presentation, it's sort of tucked away, so we don't feel as impactful as being in the middle of the row. It's surrounded by two five-story apartment buildings. It is partially visible from Prospect Place, but that's only the deck portion. And 138, 136, I believe, did have its Oriole removed, and I believe it was at a parlor level, and that was approved by Landmark, as Richard Lowery mentioned.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have other questions? Okay, I think we don't. Oh, I'm going to start to unmute everyone so we can close the hearing and move to our discussion. Commissioners, look for my request. All right, and Commissioner Devonshire, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Don't move.
Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion. So this is a very long row at one end of this block. And as has been presented, many of the houses retain a bade rear facade at the parlor floor, except for the ones at the very end of the row, one of which was, the commission approved the removal of the bay window there. And at that time, the findings were because of its lack of visibility, the fact that it and others in the row were altered, and that nearby ones had been removed. And so, as you know, we talk about applying consistent standards, but we also look at every application on a case-by-case basis. So this is at the other end of the block. And we've heard testimony about whether it's visible in the context of others, although it sounds from the applicant like really it's the deck that's visible and not the bay window itself. So with some of that context, why don't we go ahead and start our discussion? Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
This is, on its face, it seems very simple. And after thinking about it, I do not like to remove historic fabric. And the bay window is such a special architectural element in some of these groundstones that to remove it, to me, means destroying the design essentially. And I do understand the reasons for looking at things in different ways that we, some buildings have been, have their bay windows removed, others have not. And at the end, I come down on the idea that I think I want to keep the bay window and I, as a form and as a fabric.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson.
Yeah, this is a tough one. I was on the fence, but I'm leaning towards Everardo's position. The, you know, some of them have been removed, but not all. And the fact that some of them are altered doesn't really convince me. So I want to stick with the bay window, and so that's my view.
Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
I actually think that what's being proposed is appropriate in terms of visibility and in terms of, or non. And while I understand the issue with the bay windows, I still think that what they're proposing is relatively modest enough and makes sense for the owners. So I think I can approve this.
Okay. Commissioner Holford Smith.
Yeah, this is a tough one. I looked at the image of the bay, and I thought, well, you know, that's such a strong feature of these buildings, and it's one of a long row. I really was reluctant to remove the bay, but it's also at the very end of the row, up against the larger building. So I'm a little bit on the fence, and I think that I'd like to hear about what the majority, the commission, would think.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin.
I think that because it's, if we're in a different position, I would feel differently. But I think that the fact that it is at the end of this row and the two larger buildings right there and the limited visibility, I think it is, it is okay in this particular case. I was just looking at the, it looks like the front of the building is slightly different too in this row, but. I'm sorry.
There's a large bay in front of the, on the front, which actually makes it different from the rest of the houses on the streets.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. But I do want to just note that we're in the public meeting portion, which, but thank you for the clarification. Okay, go ahead, Diana.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that. I wasn't sure. Yeah, that's fine. And so I'm thinking that it is, for me, I can make, I can see it as a bit of a special case, and I would permit it, and this one is the end here. I think that's approved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum.
I agree with Diana. I think that because it's at the end, excuse me, and because it's kind of behind, it's bracketed by the two apartment buildings, I think it is an acceptable variation. However, I would suggest that they work with staff on a couple of things. First of all, you may want to continue that very prominent, it seems like it used to be the original frieze across the top with your OG gutter and just to kind of blend it in, to have it kind of relate to the row, and also make sure that the finish of the addition blends with the row. And since there are no major fences between the properties, I do think that one of the comments that was made during the testimony about the kind of weirdness of a first-floor-only addition that floats in the air can be mitigated by having brick piers go down to the ground instead of skinny columns. And I'm not sure if that was the intention. The plan shows columns. The elevation shows piers. But I think that the heavier pier would be more appropriate and give it a little bit more visual grounding.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire.
If it was in poor condition, I would think otherwise, but I'm inclined to agree with Everardo and John on this thing.
Okay. Commissioner Chen.
I'm inclined to agree with the majority, given that it's toward the tail end and that is tucked in. And that, yeah, I tend to lean toward the side of the majority, but I do understand what Ann is talking about.
Okay. Commissioner Bland.
I'm impressed that Wellington knows what the majority is. I've lost count. I'm going to say I'm with the majority too, but I'm not sure I'm on the same page with Wellington. In any event, because of the location, because we've approved additions to rear yards, modest as this one is, so many times in so many places before. And also, we've allowed the removal of Ls, quite with alacrity, I would say, that the removal of these bays, even though they still have a consistency in this location to some degree, that combined with the idea that the stained glass will be relocated more or less in the same area that it is now, all of that leads me to believe that this is an acceptable application. And I would emphasize also the skinny legs should, whatever that original idea was, should be not so skinny and be brick piers that go down to the ground.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Letfy.
Yeah, I think now we know what the majority is. And so, anyway, I happen to agree with that. It's modest. The location makes sense. They preserve the windows. I'm on board with the idea of the piers running down to give it a little more heft.
Okay. All right, great. So I think that, I think we have six. Commissioner Holford Smith, I don't know if you wanted to weigh in again since you were sort of waiting to hear others.
Sure. I think, you know, given the majority, I could go along with this.
Okay. All right. So I think we have a motion to approve, but we will recommend that they make sure that the piers that come to the ground are hefty and that they finish it to blend in with the rest of the row. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to make that motion?
How did I know? Sure. Regarding 120 Underhill Avenue, Prospect Heights Historic District, the application is to construct a rear addition. I note, the building's scale, style, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Prospect Heights Historic District. I recommend approval. Finding that only a portion of the rear addition and deck would be visible from public thoroughfare from a limited vantage points over the rear yard at an oblique angle within the context of secondary facades, the leaded glass transom windows will be salvaged and reinstalled at the proposed addition. The existing bay window at the rear facade has been altered. It's not visible from a public thoroughfare, and is at the end of the row, and therefore it's removable and not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building row or Prospect Historic District. But all the bay windows in this row appear to have been altered and some have been removed, diminishing their significance and the presence in the row. That the addition will not rise as well had the rear facade on the top floor were retained, thereby preserving the building's relationship to the others in the row, that the depth of the parlor floor addition and associated deck would be consistent with the average depth of other rear additions found within the Central Green Space. That the brick-clad rear additional with large masonry openings will feature a materials palette and ratio of solid to void that is consistent with other rear additions found in other buildings of the type within this historic district. And the applicant will work with staff to clarify details about pier supports, brick pier supports, finishes, and other trim and other related details.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second.
Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Letfy.
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay, with eight in favor and three opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so it's approved with those modifications. Please continue to work with the staff. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is number five, LPC 21-06709, an application for a binding report in the Borough of Manhattan, block 73, lot 1, 96 South Street in South Street Seaport Historic District. This is a portion of a waterfront esplanade built on landfill at a former wharf. The application is to construct an open-air restaurant bar structure and install planters, railings, decking, lighting, and signage.
Okay, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the meeting, and the applicant has control of the presentation. And please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and everyone. I am Joy Gutierrez, and I am the Parks Department's architect of the Revenue Division. We are here today to present a design for an outdoor café at the East River Esplanade at the South Street Seaport. We had previously shown the commission a design that was located at the terminus of John Street and have responded to the commission and the community's desire to relocate the kiosk away from obstructing the view of the harbor and its historic ships. This new design takes that into account and has been relocated to a site adjacent to the Tin Building, as seen here in the site plan. So this park's concession was competitively bid through a request-for-proposal process and will be developed and operated under the terms of a 10-year license agreement with the South Street Seaport Limited Partnership, a subsidiary of Howard Hughes Corporation and the City of New York. They are represented here today by George Jacinto. The concession is obligated to fully fund and manage the design and construction of the project. And it is important to note that unlike most parks concessions whose license fees go into the city's general fund, the license fees paid here will all go back into the surrounding parkland, including 50% of proceeds going to improvements of the Imagination Playground and the other 50% going towards maintenance operations of the East River Esplanade. This project is a priority of parks to create a new amenity for the community to fully enjoy the surrounding seaport while creating vital new economic activity at a critical time in our city's history. The design we are presenting today is for a structure that is completely reversible but is being proposed to remain year-round for the entirety of the 10-year term. Mancini Duffy are the architects of record, and they are represented today by Jessica Schuch. Mancini Duffy are the architects of record and they are represented today by Jessica Sheridan and Jessica Man Amato, who I will turn this over to, to present the design. Thank you.
Hello. Can everyone hear us okay? Great. So today we'll talk a little bit more about the site that Joy introduced. We'll speak to our neighborhood inspiration. We'll address some of the comments that were made with the previous design and then move into our new design with some renderings. So as Joy mentioned, this is the previous site that was at the end of John Street. We've moved it now so it's adjacent to the Tin Building just to the north of Fulton Street. But by doing that, our neighborhood inspiration is largely with the Tin Building because it's so, it's adjacent to it, it is aligned with the edge of it. And we are also managing underneath the FDR as part of the inspiration. So we took a number of photographs to try to help illustrate the renderings. As you can see, everything and as you know, everything is under construction. So some of the views aren't perfect, but hopefully it's enough to illustrate the perspective. And so in these images, you can see the coloring of the dark green overhang and the dark green elements along with the white siding and that plays into our design as you'll see. So with the Woods Baggett design that was presented last July, we heard a few things in the hearing that we've addressed in the latest design. There was a concern that the design obstructed the views of the seaport and the river and the historic ships. We, there was a concern about the pedestrian way and allowing access for pedestrians. The height of the ceiling was discussed as well as the overall area of the ceiling. And there was a question about the materiality of the overall structure in relation to where it was located on the pier. The size also came up. The original size was 2,548 square feet. So moving into our design, we believe that we've addressed many of those comments. We also recently had a call with the Community Board which raised additional concerns. So these are, these are the things that we have tried to address with the new design. We've, like I said, moved it west of the Tin Building. It's adjacent to the Tin Building seating. So the question about materiality now relates a lot more to the Tin Building materiality. Views of the historic ships and the water are no longer obstructed. We've minimized the ceiling so it only covers the essential areas around the bar. And the materiality, like I said, is related to the Tin Building materiality. We've also reduced the overall footprint from about 2,500 square feet to 1,500 square feet. The Community Board discussion centered a lot on the roof profile and minimizing the depth of the roof so as to not block the views of the Tin Building as much. We've raised the roof as high as possible in order to keep and maintain those views of the Tin Building without needing to beef up the columns. There's that balance between the thickness of the roof and the width of the columns that we've tried to manage. We've maximized the extent of the glass facing the Tin Building and we have some better views of that to explain what we're talking about with the new design. And we've considered the transition and the connection of the blockhouse since it abuts right up against the Tin Building seating. So jumping into the design, here you see the blockhouse nestled up against the sidewalk and the bike path. What you see within the dotted line at the middle of the blockhouse is the covered portion of the bar and the kitchen area. To the left and right of this is an open patio area, each having ramps leading up to them to address ADA access. The blockhouse itself sisters up directly to the stairs, leading up to the Tin Building beyond. And you can see the footings of the FDR directly to the right and the left of the blockhouse. So it's nestled directly under the FDR here between those two footings and directly against the steps of the Tin Building. So here you can see the elevation of the blockhouse in relation to the Tin Building and the FDR as if you're viewing it from across the street. So you can see here that the majority of the facade of the Tin Building is still visible and the blockhouse nestles into the right corner here between the two footings under the FDR. So the main stairs leading up to the Tin Building and the majority of the facade is visible. You can also see here clearly in the bottom elevation, the longitudinal section of the blockhouse, that our metal and our wooden glass facade at the back of the blockhouse is clear glass. So it allows you to see directly through to the blockhouse. You can clearly see the covered portion of the blockhouse over the bar and the kitchen area. And then you can see the patios to the right and left with the ramps leading up to them. You're also seeing the umbrellas here which will cover the patio areas. And these are showing them in the closed position and we'll also see them in the open position as we go through the design. This is showing you the section through. So you're seeing the FDR illustrated in purple above the blockhouse. You're seeing the steps and then the Tin Building beyond to the right. What this clearly illustrates is the height from the top of the roof to the underside of the FDR. So we have three foot six to the main trusses underneath the FDR and then five feet to the structure in the middle, the main structure underneath the FDR. We have, as Jessica mentioned, reduced the height of the ceiling portion of the blockhouse. It's four feet eight inches. We've reduced that by more than half based on the comments we got back from the Community Board. So we've made it as thin as possible while being able to maintain the structure of the truss system of the roof and have our recessed lights within the ceiling. You can see that we have also raised the height of it overall in order to provide a better view directly through the blockhouse and into the Tin Building facade beyond. So this is really showcasing the design of the blockhouse. So what you're seeing here is the central portion of the covered area, the two patios on the left and right. You can clearly see the ramps and the railing design which mirrors the aesthetic of the Tin Building beyond. All of the materials here are really a nod to the Tin Building and the materials that you first see on the Tin Building that we have pulled into the blockhouse. So we have a dark green painted wood, we have a natural looking wood on the flooring as well as the columns and the ceiling of the covered portion of the blockhouse. You can see that there are steps at the front that are flanked by planters on the left and right and then the bar area in the middle where we have taken a nod to the Tin Building and wrapped it in a white siding material. The pendant lights that are hanging over the bar are decorative and all of the other lights are either recessed into this wood ceiling or are wall sconces around the columns. And you can clearly see through the bar shelving that will be in the middle of the space as well as you can see through the wood and glass system at the back into the facade of the Tin Building beyond. This is showcasing what it will look like in the winter during inclement weather. We have removable plexi and dark green painted wood panels that we will be adding on to the facade of the covered area, attaching on in case of inclement weather as needed to enclose just this portion. There's a door at the right and the left side on the patio areas which will lead into this enclosed space in the case of inclement weather. This is showing you a view as if you're viewing from the blockhouse, looking down the steps into the patio area and into the back of the blockhouse. So what you're seeing here is the lower portion of the wall that is solid, has white siding on it to mirror what you're seeing on the Tin Building and on the front of the bar of the blockhouse. There is one row of frosted glass in order to hide the kitchen equipment and any unsightly views into the kitchen and then all of the rest of the glass is perfectly clear to allow for that visual directly through. These are the finishes of the green metal roof cornice. We have the white, the oak columns and posts throughout, the oak ceiling with recessed lights, dark green painted and clear and frosted glass inserts on the glass wall system, the metal railing and the black solid surface countertop. We have the metal siding for the bar front and then the back portion of the wall that marries up to the steps as well. And then we have the dark green painted wood base and plexi demountable dividers which enclose the cover portion of the blockhouse during inclement weather. Here is an image of the furniture that we're looking at. So a nod to the same type of materials with metal tables, wooden metal chairs, metal bar stools. We have wood and white metal to allow for that see-through visual on the shelving above the bar. You're seeing the exterior wall sconces that are mounted on to the columns, the downlights which will be mounted on to the wood ceiling inside of the covered portion of the blockhouse and then the pendant lights over the bar as decorative lighting. This is showcasing the umbrella over the two patio areas and you're seeing it here in the open position. So it was chosen specifically because it's very minimal and streamlined. And then you're also seeing the metal planters which flank the steps at the front entrance to the blockhouse. So just to address signage, we have not yet developed what the signage is yet and we plan on coming back to you once we have developed it further. But we've allocated some area above at the entrance from the ramps on either side for the signage. So again, we'll come back to you with the development of the sign design, but we wanted to at least show what we're thinking and where we're thinking for now. So we're going to take you on a tour around the blockhouse to give a visual of what it looks like as you're approaching it. So here you're really seeing how it's nestled underneath the FDR. You're seeing the Tin Building beyond and you're really able to understand the aesthetic of how the two speak to each other and how that sits nestled underneath the FDR along the right side of the blockhouse. So this is on approach from Fulton Street. On the bottom, you can really see a clear visual of how much of the FDR you're actually seeing and the view of the Tin Building through that and beyond. This is as if you're underneath the FDR and you're walking into the patio area of the blockhouse. In this, you're seeing the umbrellas that are opened over the patio area. And it's as if you're on approach, walking up the ramp into the patio. This is kind of mid-block, looking at it from across the street. So again, you can really see a clear view of the facade of the Tin Building throughout two-thirds of the left-hand view on the side and this is nestled into the right side. And you can see the proportion of it in relation to the Tin Building and the view through it. Moving around to the other side on approach to the other patio and then adjacent to the steps leading up to the Tin Building. So you can see how the blockhouse really marries nicely into those steps leading up to the Tin Building. And then this is as if you're on the top by the Tin Building, looking back down towards the blockhouse. You can really see the relation of it to the FDR and to the Tin Building on your left. This is the back view. So you're getting a clear visual through the blockhouse and you're able to clearly see through beyond to the views beyond. And then you're able to clearly see how much of that glass system you'll be able to see through to the Tin Building beyond this on the opposite side. And this is as if you're inside, standing at the bar, looking back towards the blockhouse. You're able to clearly see the finishes portrayed here as well as the relationship of the blockhouse to the steps and to the Tin Building beyond. And then this is kind of completing the loop around to the left side from the opposite, from Beekman Street. So you're able to look back towards and see much more of the facade of the Tin Building and then the blockhouse nestled on the right-hand side.
All right. Thank you very much. And I know we have at least one question. So we'll move to questions. Commissioner Goldblum?
Okay. Two related questions. Number one, what is the wood doing here in terms of its relationship between the blockhouse and the Tin Building when I don't believe there's any exposed wood on the Tin Building itself? What's your idea? Why is that a good choice of material here? And number two, in a broader sense, why, you made a lot of point about how this building relates to the Tin Building very strongly, color, detail, et cetera. Why should it relate to the Tin Building architecturally? And why does that relationship of copying or, you know, imitation, why is that justifying its appropriateness from a historical point of view?
You want me to take the first and you'll take the second?
Or?
Sure. So there is wood on the steps to the Tin Building. The larger seating area where people will be hanging out will have the wood. And so we were continuing the wood down from those steps on to the platform of the blockhouse. So that's the first question.
And the posts, the posts?
The posts are the same material as well. And so, so again, we didn't want to create a miniature Tin Building, but we did want to nod to the location of it. Given that it's abutted right up against it, we didn't want to create something completely foreign. And then speaking to the relationship, I think it goes to what Jessica was just saying. We didn't want to copy it exactly, but we did want them to speak to each other since the blockhouse is directly adjacent to the Tin Building and connected to the stairs. We wanted to make sure that they speak to each other and they feel of the same ilk, that there's a relationship between the materials that have been used on the blockhouse and the Tin Building itself so that you are reading a bit of that relationship. And the materiality, we felt like tied those two together very well between the two and how we were able to borrow from the Tin Building and correlate it into the blockhouse.
Thank you. You're muted, Sarah.
Thank you. I was unmuting Commissioner Jefferson.
I, you said that you're using the Tin Building as a reference and I can accept that. And the question I have is the column grid of the Tin Building, what is it column grid of your block building? Is it the same? Are they, is the structure the same? The proportions the same or are they different?
The proportions are slightly different. The proportions are based on the need for the structure of the blockhouse itself. So it doesn't correlate exactly to the structure of the Tin Building beyond based on the location of where the blockhouse ended up. There's no direct way to correlate it and still meet the structural requirements of the blockhouse itself. But they are a similar size to what you're seeing beyond in the Tin Building.
So they don't connect actually to columns in any way. They're just, they're slightly ajar from each other. So notion of seeing through one to the other is not literal. It's just kind of implied, no?
Exactly. It's implied. And the reason that we have the materiality that we have on the glass wall at the back of the blockhouse itself is in order to make that connection even greater.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, I don't see any other questions at this time. So we'll move to public testimony and we may have more questions after that. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Anthony to take us through the speaker.
Okay, we only have one sign up for this item and I will bring her in. It's Kelly Carroll. Kelly, you should be in the meeting now.
I am. Thank you. Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. For the record, HTC did not comment or object to the proposed location of this concession at the initial public hearing on July 14, 2020. But regarding today, the Tin Building only survives thanks to its inclusion within the New York City Historic District. Under this designation, it has been allowed to be disassembled and relocated. This landmark deserves to be viewed in the round. The prioritization of views to this building were presented by the applicant in their case to the LPC in their case to the LPC to disassemble it and move it in the first place. So why does this concession sit directly in front of the landmark tin building, blocking its facade? The HDC supports the aesthetic idea of waterfront prominent dining, promenade dining. Who doesn't? Since the Howard Hughes Corporation and the EDC have not revealed plans for the new market building site, formerly Fulton Fish Market, we suggest placing this concessionaire in this lot, which is next door to the tin building. And once the new market building is demolished, there will be waterfront dining views available as the applicant initially desired. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any more signups, and I do not see any other hands raised for this item.
All right, thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board One, and they recommended approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'd like to turn back to the applicants and see if you'd like to respond to the comments by HDC.
Hi, Sarah. It's George Giaquinto. So with respect to the recommendation by the Historic Districts Council, the new market site is not part of our leasehold with the city. And so we have no ability to recommend anything in that location. So it's not part of our leasehold.
Okay. All right. And in terms of the reviews and relationship to the tin building, I think much of your presentation has been about that. Okay. Any final questions, commissioners? All right, we're gonna move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. And so commissioners, look.
Yes.
I was trying to raise a hand, but it wouldn't click.
Oh, okay. Please go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question. So is the intention that this is, I think I may have asked it the last time, we saw a version, a temporary structure? Is that the idea that it's temporary or that it's? That's my question.
Yeah, no, it's not temporary. It's up for the length of the agreement with the city, which is about 10 years. So the temporary enclosure to winterize it, the vinyl partitions are temporary, but the structure itself is disassemble-able, but it's not temporary.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move to our discussion. And I do want to just note for the record that Commissioner Devonshire has recused on this item and has not been present for the meeting at all and will not be for the discussion. So Commissioner Gustafson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I will.
And Commissioner Holford-Smith, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we'll begin our discussion. And I think, you know, we had originally seen this at a hearing last July. And at that time, as the applicant stated, there were a lot of questions and comments about the heaviness of it. Could it be more lightweight to feel more ephemeral? Could it be more lightweight? Could the ceiling be lowered or raised to allow more views out to the seaport, out to the water and the pier? And the applicants have responded by shifting the location so that it no longer obstructs the views to the water. They've also changed the height and I think some of the detailing of the structure and are thinking about it differently now in its new location and showed a different design. And so we'll begin our discussion on this. Commissioner Luttrell, would you like to start this one?
I'm sure. You know, this was an unexpected response to what we were all asking, to all of our concerns. But I think it was a very smart one in many ways. First, it reopened that very important view corridor that we were all concerned about. And I'm not sure it would have ever been possible to solve all the issues that we had with what they had proposed. And it moved it to a spot where I feel programmatically, this may not be within our purview, but programmatically, I feel that this makes more sense in terms of what's going on with the tin house and what they're trying to accomplish with both of. And I think the applicant has done a very, very nice job of thinking about some of the issues that we had and applying it in this design here. So there's, you know, a nice degree, there's a roof, but it doesn't go extend over all of the seating. And I think the solution of those umbrellas that, you know, open over but then can just retract in a way so that they don't have a big footprint is a good one. I like the fact that the window, the windows of the tin house, but they're not overdoing it. It's not overdone in any way. The materiality also does the same. They're making reference, but they're not being slavish, which would maybe problematic. So I think the scale is good. And I think it's a very good solution to what we, to our issues, and I can approve this.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes, yes. I can approve this. The only architectural issue I have is the cornice line. And I think others have mentioned it or have read it somewhere, that it could be thinner. And I think the glass proportion, the columns proportions work well. I can accept it. I can approve it.
Okay. Commissioner Gustafson?
I think that, well, number one, the, you know, the location move was a very good idea. Rather than trying to play around with creating something that was so airy that you could see the ships through it and the views we wanted to see, simply moving it solved the problem entirely. It was bound to block something, and what it does block now is minimal, which is to say, you know, the real, you know, dramatic views are from other angles and not from looking underneath the FDR. The, I think the, you know, the height of it, the distance between the top of it and the bottom of the FDR makes some sense. And yeah, I think it's, I think it's fine as is. I don't have a problem with any part of it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Thanks. So I think I'm in agreement that the new location is better and that it's reading a little bit more like kind of an object that has some aspect of sort of impermanence about it. And the heights and things are better, are improved. But I have to say that my whole view on this has, I think, has changed since we last thought about it. And that's because of the, what we've experienced in the city in the last half year to a year, which is this ubiquity of, you know, jack-built sheds in all of our streets and the prospect of their being here forever or who knows what. And how depressing those, all of those structures are, one after another, though necessary. And I'm finding that this design, such as it is, looks and was recalling, reminding me of all that more than anything else. And this gets to Michael Goldblum's question of, you know, what the wood and why the columns the way they are and what's the relationship or not relationship to the historic building behind? I mean, I find this to be, in the end, incredibly uninspired, uninteresting to look at, and reminding me of all these depressing sheds. So I don't know what to do.
Okay, so not comfortable with the design. Okay. All right. Commissioner Holford-Smith?
That's a tough one to follow. I actually, I think that the move to this location is a good one to preserve the views at the previous location. And I think in general that it is acceptable. I understand that the thoughts about the wood columns, maybe it's the fact that they're proportioned and they're just kind of blocky. And they don't relate to the tin building at all. Maybe they could work on that proportion. It would help make it look less like a shed. And I think also the roof profile, as I think Everardo said, maybe it could be streamlined and made a little more sleek. But I think in general, in concept, I can find it acceptable.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
I think definitely I agree with others that the move of location is good. I think that having it be somewhat referential to the tin building is a good thing. I think that, you know, it has the character of an impermanent structure, although, you know, this is a 10-year lease, but it's something you can tell could be taken down very readily. It's not that, it has no sense of permanence, which I think is kind of important in this situation. I could pretty well approve it as presented, but there would certainly be no harm in improving some of the profiles, if that's possible, to make it look a little more light and elegant. But otherwise, I think it's fine as it is.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thank you. I agree 100% with what Adi said, but I still find it basically appropriate. And I think that, I think that, it's funny, you know, the move was the essential thing. The move was a great move. Putting it here, you know, they traded an incredibly elegant, bespoke little pavilion in the wrong location for a common crappy shed in the right location. Now, that said, it's the right location for a common shed. I think that the associations with the tin building are completely misplaced. I think that the windows are a terrible mistake, frankly, and they just block the views of the tin building. You know, the funny thing about the tin building and the fish market is that the fish market is the place where the foreground was always what you saw. You never saw the buildings. You always saw the barrels of iced clams or the trucks filled with crates or the people crowding or the tables, ice tables. You never saw the buildings because they were always covered with stuff. So the idea of putting stuff in front of the tin building is appropriate, you know? But that stuff shouldn't be the tin building in front of the tin building. It should be something else. So I think the opportunity to do something much more interesting was lost, but that doesn't mean that it's not appropriate. And I think as a cheap crappy shed with these dismal sconces and, you know, just pedestrian details, I think it's appropriate, but I just don't think it's very good. And I think that the comments that were made by others to improve it would make it better and would certainly be okay with me. But I think that the only strong suggestion that I would have on an architectural basis in terms of appropriateness would be the removal of the multi-pain glass at the back. I think it just obscures the view of the historic building and doesn't really make for a strong connection anyway.
Okay, so, but just so I understand, you still would approve it even though you think that the glass should go? Okay, got it. All right. So, and I think, I agree also that I think this is a much better location where it isn't obstructing the views out to the water and the pier and that you see it, you're really sort of in the context now of the underside of the FDR as it meets the view of the tin building. And I think that, you know, being somewhat referential could be okay. Sort of the market quality of both, I guess, has some relationship to the activity that happened here. But I think it would be worth the suggestions that we've heard, including the streamlining of the cornice, as Everardo suggested, and the thinking about the proportions and detailing of the columns. So in consultation with the staff. So Commissioner Luttrell, would you make a motion with those two recommendations? And then I think we will have enough to vote.
In the matter of docket, LPC 21-0670996 South Street, South Street, which is Borough District, portion of the waterfront esplanade built on land built out of former wall. The application is to open your restaurant bar structure and install planters, lighting and signage. I recommend approval with my findings finding that the work will not damage any significant architectural feature, that the work will not obstruct any of the prominent views of the waterfront or the tin building, partially blocked from view by the FDR drive, and that the tin building will remain visible for the open frame and clear glaze without the structure. That this primarily open frame structure and mix of simply designed installations will recall in a contemporary way the utilitarian character of his work works and their varied mix of equipment, furnishings and cargo. That the structure and associated installations will be most skilled to the site and feature a unified, simple design, helping them remain harmonious secondary presence. That the materials and finishes of the structure and installations will be with materials and finish historically found at the tin building further helping them to harmonize with their context. And that within the unique context framed by the tin building, which was shifted from its original placement and the surrounding modern elements, including the FDR drive, asphalt paving and the wood steps and decking, the structure will be compatible with the evolution of the site, will not detract from the significant historic architectural features of the tin building surrounding, reedscape or historic district. I recommend that the applicant, working closely with staff, take a look at the cornice so that it is replaced with a simpler, thinner edge profile to make it less formal and appear lighter. And I also recommend they work on staff on the proportions and detailings of the columns.
Great, thank you. All right. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland? Was he recused?
I'm sorry. He, it was a last-minute notice to me. He is recused and hasn't been present.
Thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Nay.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
He's recused.
He's recused. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luttrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford-Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with eight in favor and one opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved, and please continue to work with the staff on refining those details. And we'll move to the next item.
The next item is number six, LPC 21-06980, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan Block 513 Lot 31, 151 Mercer Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is a modern building designed by O'Neill Lang and Architects in building 2017. The application is to install a peanut ball sign and associated lighting.
Okay, commissioners, the applicants have entered the meeting, and they have control of the presentation. Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Erin Rulie for Higgins Quays Park and Partners. Let's see if I can.
There we go. Sorry about that. As Corey mentioned, this is an application for a new painted wall sign and an associated light fixture at 151 Mercer Street. 151 is located on the west side of Mercer Street, between Prince and Halston Streets in Soho Cast Iron District. And on the right, you can see the subject building. This was approved, it'll look familiar to you, it was approved in 2014. And from the outset was intended to be the, was designed and constructed for the designer Tori Birch as a flagship store. And at the time of the approval in 2014, part of what the commissioners appreciated about this new design was this sort of dynamic quality of it. It has an operable shutter system that you see here that recalled the historic conditions. And so that contemporary design and energetic quality is really the context for our proposal today. Sorry. It's not answering. Here we go. On the left is the existing condition. And so you can see this exposed secondary elevation over the adjacent building. And on the right, the proposed new sign here, a monochromatic, very simple logo painted on the facade with an integrated light fixture within the coping of the existing building. We'll look at the details a bit more. But just stepping back to take a look at the overall block front context. So here you see it's a really rich context of varying scales, periods and styles. And that 151 fits very nicely into that overall block front situation. You'll also notice that across the street is a painted sign, which is located a few doors down, but on the east side of Mercer Street. There is a long history, as you know, of painted wall signs in the district. And these really fall into two categories. Advertising signage, which we see here in the bottom-left view for a product or a brand. And then accessory signage, which really meant to locate or identify a tenant or store within the building it's associated with. And so here on the top-left, we have an example of that for a cooking supply store. And also the view here in detail on the right, the American Pinking Shears building. So this company located here in the 1930s at a long history and is relevant to our proposal today because it's a very clear identity painted on the side of the wall, very sort of legible graphic, lit from above, which you see here with these armatures. And all with the intent of locating the company and the store within the context of the streetscape. And of course, that tradition of painted wall signs continues today in the approved wall signs that the commission has reviewed over the years. And here are just a few examples. On the top-right is an accessory sign for the gallery within this building. The other three examples are more typical advertising signs that the commission approves generally under a master plan to regulate the evolution and change of the content within those signs. This one's particularly interesting because you can see the ghost of a former sign behind the current sign. And the proposal for 151 is somewhat distinct from all of these because it is for a sole unchanging tenant. Tori Birch will occupy the full building. And this is for accessory signage for the sole building occupant. And then on the right, we see, this is just sort of a graphic analysis mapping the locations where the commission has approved these painted wall signs. 151 is identified here. You can see that sign that we looked at previously, that's right across the street. And then a couple of additional signs that are in the immediate vicinity of that. So there is an existing context for this kind of sign in this area of the district. And then here we can just see the proposal in the overall context. We see that the axon of the existing building and then that south elevation. And we'll look at this coping in a bit more detail in relation to the proposed sign. And so here is the proposed sign in detail. So the logo extends six feet, six inches across in diameter. And it's set back just over three feet from the front facade, which is the typical commission request for the placement of the sign. And it's this simple monochromatic scheme with the ivory paint color, which really recalls the historic conditions of those accessory signs that we looked at, very sort of minimal palette. But also recalls that sort of ghosted effect that we see throughout the district of other painted signs that have faded over time. With regard to the light fixture, there is an existing coping. It is six inches in height. And so the proposal is to, the light fixture would be covered by a metal channel that extends from this front, the front face of this chimney to the return of the front facade. Six inches in height, so it's consistent with what exists along the rest of the remainder of the building, but keeping it, running it the full length of this distance so that it's a consistent linear appearance there. And it would be the same material and same finish as the existing coping, which is shown here. And then here's a detail of that coping. The lighting designer has crafted this enclosure so that it shields the light source. So the light source is not visible, it's tucked in this recess. And then it just sort of gently washes down with some light on that south elevation. And then here we just see the overall proposal and context. And so the signage and lighting are really a small but important continuation of the development of this flagship building. It's in keeping with the tradition of the historic wall signs in the district. It's comfortably in the streetscape. And it really reflects that dynamic quality that we talked about in terms of the new design. And so I think with that, I'll end the presentation. And any questions you might have?
All right, thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Okay, and just for context, Erin, you pointed out that across the street, there was the one sign. So if you're looking north on this block, you might see that one other sign and then this logo sign.
Yes.
But I think there's nothing else on this block. And until you get to, is it Prince Street that's below you?
Yes, it's the, it's the one across the street. I'll just flip back there really quickly. This across the street, which is a couple of buildings to the north, it's about right there. And then the next sign is, it actually faces west on Prince and Crosby.
Okay.
Prince and, sorry, Mercer.
Right, and I think you would never see it in the same view as these two. And in fact, these two are so far away from each other, they may also not really be that visible in conjunction with each other.
No, and one is much higher than the other two. It's about a three-story differential between those two.
Okay, thank you. We have some other questions. Commissioner Jefferson?
Just one on criteria. The coping to the edge of the sign, is there, I thought it was a master plan that said it had to be a certain height from the sign, the top of the sign to the top of the coping. In this particular case, it seems very close to the coping. Am I missing something?
So Corey, the standard, I mean, historically, the signs actually did go right up to the very top of the parapet. And the commission has sort of approved a range of them, but does typically ask that it be dropped down and not right up to the edge of the parapet. Corey, is there any more guidance you can give in terms of a typical number?
Yeah, I would say a typical number is probably more like three to five feet from the top, but I believe it may also vary depending on the complexity of the parapet line and other factors like that. So I don't think there's an actual standard.
Because when, last week, if I remember correctly, we had signs and there was some criteria of three feet or two and a half feet from the top. There was a whole series of elements in the master plan of signage, no?
That was for that particular proposal and those advertising signs. So it's, while many of the criteria in those proposals for those master plans sort of align with standards we've approved, they are, you know, it was part of those proposed master plans. And so we, you know, we have certainly asked that signs be pushed back from the facade, you know, three to five feet. But I think it's been a little more flexible in terms of the height. And again, historically, the signs typically went right to the facade and up to the roof. But because these master plans envisioned changing signs that would be, you know, in a variety of colors and imagery, we've tended to pull it away from the edges. Now, this one is more of a graphic image and not necessarily the colorful, sort of almost photographic imagery that some of those other signs have.
Thank you. And one other question, is this a painted, this is painted? Is it hand painted, this particular sign? Or is it some kind of applique?
It's painted.
Painted, thank you.
Okay, other questions. Commissioner Luttrell?
Actually, I just answered my own question, so.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Okay, let's move to testimony. And if you're in the meeting, raise your hand so we can identify you if you'd wish to speak. And I'll turn it over to Anthony to take us through speakers.
Thank you. So we do have a speaker and his name is Pete Davies. Pete, I brought you into the meeting. You just have to unmute your microphone and turn on your camera if you wish to.
Here I am, thank you very much. My name is Pete Davies, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
We can hear you.
Yes, Pete Davies from Broadway Residence Coalition in Soho. I would like to support the resolution from Community Board Two and support the actual sign, but oppose the illumination. I think you'll see on LPC Five, the approved signs in the district, none of those have illumination. You'll also, I think, see in LPC Ten, the appendix of context, that all of the illuminated signs that are shown are pre-existing prior to the extension of the district. Only one that might not be is the wall at 601 Broadway, but that was a very special condition in regard to restoring the wall artwork and a deal that was done to, with the owner of the building to allow for some illuminated signage under the painted wall. So I would just like to thank the commissioners for their attention to this. We've been working really hard in Soho to the integrity of the district, maintaining these kind of controls on illumination. And as you all know, we're somewhat under assault here in Soho coming up. And we do appreciate the ongoing attention to the integrity of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do not have any more hands raised for this item.
All right, thank you. And Rich, do you have any written testimony?
Yes, we do have the resolution from Manhattan Community Board Two. They recommended approval of a painted sign, provided that the designs conform to the applicable regulations and denial of the proposed lighting or any kind of lighting.
Okay, thank you. All right, Erin, would you like to respond?
Sure, sure. So I think both have the same issue. But with regard to the Community Board Resolution, the discussion was really about the quality of light, about the idea or the concept of illuminating the wall versus the fixture itself, which, you know, we understand to be what the commission is concerned with versus the actual effect of the light. And so, you know, in terms of what the commission has approved in the past of, you know, visible light fixtures, this is very minimally designed and it's been sort of very carefully crafted so that it does have a minimal impact, again, on a new building. And if I could just, we'll address this sort of context sheet. You know, it's less about the, whether or not the commission has approved light fixtures in these cases or in these instances in the past, and more about how you experience light in the district, I think, if we're going to talk about light. And, you know, there certainly is at the wall light fixtures attached to the advertising there. But you do experience murals in the extension of the district where it's lit from the adjacent property. There's ambient light, which is intentional. You know, it's meant to cast light, there's a light effect on the signage. And then there are grandfathered conditions in the extension as well. But there's also architectural lighting and the bouncing of light from lotline windows onto side elevations. So this isn't meant to be, you know, a strobe light or a floodlight. It's about a subtle lighting effect on a wall that is particularly dark. It actually gets, because there's a street light in front of the building, it actually ends up in shadow a lot more than in another, in other contexts perhaps. And so it's, you know, approving a light fixture here does not open the door for other light fixtures on other signage. This is not advertising. It's a contemporary building built for this specific retailer and is part of the overall sort of concept of the construction.
Okay, thank you. And so just to, I know Erin referred to what the commission generally looks like and I just wanted to clarify that. So the commission historically has, when we've looked at lighting for facades or storefronts, that we have typically not looked at the quality of the light or the wattage, but at the fixture. And have generally asked that fixtures be very minimal and if, you know, either not visible or very minimally visible by virtue of the streamlined quality of the housing placement and location. Okay, Commissioner Luttrell, I know you have a question.
Yeah, and it actually relates now to the signage. So the signage topic. So theoretically, this is the logo of the company. So it's a sign. So I guess, in my, by my definition, and I guess my question is, because it's not clear to me, do, what is our policy about lighting signs on walls? Not in.
I mean, I think we have not seen a lot of applications to light signs on secondary facades. So I think what I can say is that generally when we look at lighting, we look at the fixtures. And whether you see the fixtures, perceive the fixtures, does it blend in, does it call attention? Does it damage anything? So that's how we've typically looked at lighting.
Okay.
And, you know, yeah, okay. And, you know, I mean, I think that's true whether we're lighting, you know, lots of times we are approving fixtures to light an entire facade. And sometimes it's just for the storefront or the signage of storefront. All right, Commissioner Chapin? Oh, Diana, did I lose you? Did you have a question?
I think she's trying to unmute herself.
Yes, yes, I was, thank you. I do seem to remember instances where we have been looking at facade lighting and, you know, looking at how much lighting there was. But that's a little different, I think, than this instance anyway. What I was curious about is, I noticed in the first historical photo, which I think was the Pinking Shears building, that there were installed lights over the signage. And because my first reaction was, oh geez, I'm not used to seeing wall signs lighted. But I wondered about the history of wall signs and whether they were often lighted when they, you know, once lighting came into existence in these areas on roofs and so forth. So is there, is there a tradition that shows that some of these signs were in fact lighted? That was my question, if it might fit into the history of wall signs.
Erin, I don't know if you're still with us, did you?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I can't, I can't claim expertise in the history of wall signs and whether or not they were lit. I do know that we have found a couple of instances historically where they were lit. I do think it, you know, obviously, wall wall signs start at a, at a very early time historically, and, and lighting was somewhat later. But it certainly, they did coexist in instances.
Okay. And Commissioner Devonshire, I think you had a question as well.
Yeah, thanks, Sarah. I guess what's mildly troubling to me, at one point, Aaron said, this is not advertising. It certainly is advertising. We're essentially, without a rendering, we are left to guess what the intensity of the light is going to be from the wall. I presume that the reason that the logo was up toward the top is so that it's closer to the light source. But we don't know if the light source is going to be lighting, only that the logo or if it's going to be washing down that entire wall. At this point, it's a guess without a rendering, which I find mildly disturbing.
Commissioner Devonshire, you know, we talked with staff about whether or not a night rendering would be required here. And our advice was that this is, since the commission doesn't regulate the quality of light, that it wasn't necessary in this case. And so that's the only reason. We aren't trying to obscure the fact that we are lighting it. Certainly, in this, in this instance, the light fixture will be directly over. It's not going to extend the full width. I don't know if this at all addresses your question, but it will not extend to the full width of the, where the metal channel will be. It will only be over the light fixture with the intent of lighting the sign itself. And with regard to it being advertising, agreed, it's advertising. There are certain categories, especially for zoning, where something is considered advertising versus accessory signage. And in that, this case, it's accessory signage because it's signage for the occupant of the building. And so there is, there's an actual differentiation between those two things.
Okay, well, I can appreciate that you followed the staff's advice. For me, quality of lighting means many different things. And you showed several examples, some of which were very intense. There were different colors of lighting, you know, there's color temperature. And, and again, we're left to guess here about what this is going to be, how far down the wall it's going to go, whether it's going to vary in intensity from top to bottom, and what the, what the color temperature of the light is going to be.
It's very hard to hear.
Very low, yeah.
I got kicked out of the meeting.
There you go.
I apologize. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yes. I was able to hear most of that questioning and answer before I was kicked out. So are there any other questions? All right. And I think we don't have any other questions. So what we'll do is we will move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So I am now requesting to unmute all of you so that we can get there. And Commissioner Luttrell, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
If you're all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Any opposed? Say aye. None opposed. All right, we'll begin our discussion. So, you know, we are used to see, and those have generally been found appropriate on the basis that historically there were painted wall signs, which actually historically did advertise the occupant of the building. So in some ways, this painted logo, conversations last week about the larger context and how it relates to that. So we did look at the street scape photos, so say that helps those questions. And, and I think light fixtures are something that are newer to us in these types of applications. So why don't we go ahead and start? Commissioner Gustafson, would you lead this one?
Yeah, sure. I, frankly, I was, I'm a little surprised at how, how worked up we seem to be about this one. I, you know, when I saw this, my, without hearing the presentation, the first thing I thought was it reminded me more of traditional, the sort of sense you got of a traditional wall sign, you know, the muted nature of it, you know, and, and how it sort of blends a bit into the, into the background of the wall. I think it's modest, the size is fine, and the, and I don't mind that it's lit. So I'm fine with it just the way it is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Barron?
I agree. This is, I think, the kind of wall sign that I think makes the most kind of sense. It's not entirely descriptive, but it is, you know, it means something to those who know the brand, and it's also ghosted, as Aaron described. You know, I think I wasn't seriously considering the issue of the lighting, but I think all the points that have been raised about it have, have influenced my thinking about it. And part of those are, have, I think, what Diana Chapin asked about the, and pointed out to us, those other kinds of lights that acted, in a sense, they would wash a wall, I assume, but they also acted like pointed lights at a specific thing. So it made me think that, on some level, I think I would almost, if there was going to be lighting here, I would almost rather see just this kind of circle lit by a fixture, and I wouldn't mind seeing the fixture. There's something about this, this kind of half, half edge, it's certainly not a cornice, it doesn't really read like a, I don't, I don't really like that edge ledge piece. Anyway, that's about too many things. I think I could have proved it as it's presented. I think a better, I do agree with Michael Devonshire about the question of, do we know how much of the wall will be in, you know, lit? Will the whole wall read as lit? In which case, I don't know that that's such a great thing. I don't mind the kind of the object itself being lit in the evenings, and I don't think that that constitutes a certain kind of egregious, kind of overly showy lighting event here. So bottom line, I can prove it as it is, but I think the lighting situation could be improved.
Okay, thank you. You know, I think the last thing is the reason that historically it's down, the lighting or the wattage or the amount.
You're cutting it out.
You're cutting it out a lot. I didn't really catch that.
Okay, sorry. I was saying that because we have control over sort of enforcing the wattage of lighting, that's why we historically have focused on the fixtures and not the amount of light or whether it's white light, yellow light, or.
Got it. Well, I had the same reaction that Commissioner Gustafson had, in that this is sort of like, you know, the classic New York painted wall sign. And I think, I find that the sign itself is completely appropriate. I was about to approve the light fixture, but I actually really like Adi's suggestion of a single fixture that lights the circle. I think that would be more effective, and it would probably assuage a lot of people's concerns about how much light and how it washed in the wall. So I wonder if the applicant would consider just a single fixture that lit the circle.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I was kind of thinking the same thing that Adi was when I was asking my question, because I was thinking, you know, look at the way they, in the older days, used to like these things, that it seemed kind of more in keeping. I do like, I think that the wall sign itself is perfectly fine. And they tried to make it, I think, rather subtle, but in some ways, I think maybe just going the way the two previous commissioners have suggested would be, I think I'd find that better, too. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Okay, all right. And Commissioner Devonshire?
Yeah, in terms of the sign, I think it's fine. The way that I would be able to approve the lighting is if it is as Adi described, and if it's in a warm zone, say 28 to 3200 Kelvin, rather than a, than a cold daylight.
Okay. And Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Gustafson. I'm fine as it is. And I believe that my reading of current proposal of the lighting assistance is a, is a very indirect and diffuse light, so I'm fine as it is. And also, given the context of street lamps and things like that surrounding, it's not like the whole area is dark. I believe it's appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Bland?
Well, for a guy who doesn't particularly like wall signs at all in Soho, this is the best wall sign I've seen in 12 years. And for the reasons that John Gustafson has already said, it's muted, it's recessive, and it looks great. Regarding the lighting, I think I could accept it as it is. I think it's a little odd, but the, the idea of another kind of a, maybe an arm-supported light that would simply illuminate the circle might be better. But I think it's, A, that's not what we're seeing here to vote on, and B, it would extend over the neighbor's property, and I'm not sure that's, so I'm not sure where we stand on the lighting. But I guess I could accept what's there, in lieu of a better option for the moment.
Okay. Commissioner Luttrell?
I think I might have a slightly different view on this, which is, the sign is beautifully done. Kudos to that. But I'm not convinced that the sign should be lit. I mean, it doesn't sound to me like we encourage these, these branding or advertising signs that are generally on the walls to be lit. There may be some that are because they're bothered in. But I don't, I don't feel this needs to be lit. And I feel as though it sets a precedent that we don't necessarily want to encourage. So I'm okay with the sign, but not the lighting.
Okay. All right. And Commissioner Jefferson?
I go way back. I go where, before electricity. The sign is beautiful. And I think it, when the sunlight comes up in the morning, it becomes alive. When the sun sets, it goes to sleep. And I prefer no light.
Okay. All right. I think, and please forgive me if I'm a little bit off because my sound is going in and out. And I, so I've been trying to get everything that everyone has said. But I think that Commissioner Holford Smith and Commissioner Chapin, we're interested in exploring the idea of a single light. If you're also supportive of a, this sort of cove light, with the provision that the applicant expects a single light, I think we have six for the proposal with the light. So maybe just give me a hand sign or something if I got that right. All right. Well, I saw, and Diana, Adi, okay, great. Okay. So why don't we go ahead and make that motion? And, you know, I'll go ahead and, actually, I won't read it because I'm breaking in and out. So Commissioner Chapin, do you think you can read it with, to approve it as is, and then afterwards, we'll just suggest that they continue to explore the armature of the fixture?
Okay. And the, in the matter of a certificate of appropriateness for Manhattan, hold on, I think I got the wrong one, just a second. Yeah, okay. LPC 21-069-80151, Mercer Street, Soho Cast Iron Historic District, a building designed by O'Neill Land and Architects and built in 2017. Application is to install a painted wall sign and associated lighting. I recommend approval, finding that the installation of the proposed painted wall sign on the plain brick facade of this modern building will not obscure or cause damage to any significant architectural features. That the location and placement of the sign on a secondary facade and its painted application will be in keeping with signs traditionally found on secondary facades of buildings in this historic district. The design will be modest in terms of its small-scale, muted color palette and simple design, that the associated light fixture will blend with the adjacent parapet coping and will not call into attention to itself, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the streetscape, but that the applicant will, with the staff, to explore using an alternative, a single fixture, as that, that might be more appropriate. Does that work?
Yeah. And I, it is. I think we were, we are comfortable with it as is, but asking applicants to continue to explore, but not require that they completely change the light fixture, continue to explore the, there may be requirements that prevent a projecting arm, so they'll have to look at that.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right. Thank you. Rich, will you call the vote?
Sheriff Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Barron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Nay.
Commissioner Luttrell?
Nay.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with eight in favor and two opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved, and we'll move to the next and final item.
And that is item number seven, LPC 21-06745, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 672, Lot 1, 601 West 26th Street, the Stare at Lehigh Building Individual Landmark, also in the West Chelsea Historic District. This is an international-style warehouse building with Art Deco-style details designed by Russell G. and Walter M. Corey with Yasuo Matsui and Purdy &amp; Henderson, and built in 1930 to 31. The application is to install a rooftop generator and screening.
Hey, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Lake, can you have control? And you, please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon to your carol and Commissioners. My name is Lake and Cole with Higgins Quaysbarth and Partners. And I'm joined today by my team, Wirt Dennis with Higgins Quaysbarth, Hywin Yu, and Min Lee with AMV Architects, and Eric Schlemes with RXR, the building owner. We are here to present an application to present, or excuse me, to install an emergency generator at the roof, the 18th floor roof of the Stare at Lehigh Building. I'll begin with site introduction. I hope to begin shortly. Okay, there we are. Site introduction and some historic and existing context, and then walk you through some views. And then for more technical questions, my team is available to chime in. So Stare at Lehigh Building was built in 1931, designed by Russell and Walter Corey with Yasuo Matsui. It is an individual landmark designated in 1986, and a contributing building to the West Chelsea Historic District, designated 2008. Here's a map of the historic district and the site's location. You can see a little closer on the Sanborn map, that the building composes a full city block. It's located between West 26th Street to the south, West 27th Street to the north, 11th Avenue to the east, and 12th Avenue are the west side highway to the west. Some historic context, these are photos from the 1930s. The building was constructed as an international-style industrial building, originally for the Lehigh Valley Railroad and the Stewart-Investing originally for the Lehigh Valley Railroad and the Stewart Investing Corporation, and it served as a freight terminal and warehouse until nineteen forty-four. That use ceased in nineteen forty-four, and it was converted to commercial use, which is the current use of the building. In terms of the historic roof context, which is most relevant to the application before you today, the building was designed with multiple roof lines. You can see in this photo here, from nineteen thirty-two, looking northeast from Twelfth Avenue, the most predominant roof lines were at the tenth floor to the west, the eighteenth floor, which extends on the west side, and then through to the east, and the nineteenth floor roof serves as the high point on the building. Water towers were part of the building's utility function, and they were installed on the roof at the time of construction. Like to point out in this view, looking from Twelfth Avenue, that they were strategically positioned as far away from the primary facade we're looking at here, which is on Twenty-Sixth Street, at the north side of the nineteenth-floor roof. And then this historic view from Eleventh Avenue and Twenty-seventh Street, you can see them becoming a little bit more visible from the north. For a better look at the roof context, we've got a nineteen fifty-one aerial photo that shows those original water towers at the nineteenth-floor roof in the center here, and then the eighteenth-floor roof was wide open at historically, and then by the time of designation, that kind of roof context persisted in that the only utilitarian features on the building were the water towers. This is a view from Eleventh Avenue and about Twenty-Ninth Street, where you can see they come into greater view. These are overall views, one aerial here on the left, illustrating the building's existing conditions context. Post-LPC designation, in about two thousand, LPC approved a master plan for the future installation of rooftop equipment at this building. What we're looking at here in these existing, and this existing aerial, is that non-visible HVAC was approved for the east side of the eighteenth-floor roof, and at the nineteenth-floor roof, to fill out the area of the roof around the water towers, some taller visible cooling towers were approved at that time. A generator was envisioned with that proposal. We know from working with staff that the proposed location was here at the west side of the eighteenth-floor roof. However, that proposal was not approved at that time. We don't have any additional information. But we are proposing today to locate a generator at the northeast side of the eighteenth-floor roof. We selected this location because it's in proximity to the other historic and LPC-approved utilitarian features on the roof, and it's also the furthest extent back from the primary facade on the other side of the building at Twenty-Sixth Street. This is the generator unit that we're proposing. It is a prepackaged waterproof unit. At the base of the unit is the power station, and then these vertical projections that you see at either in, above are exhaust and intake flues. The unit is T-shaped in plan. It is approximately fifty feet long in length, and then between fourteen and twenty-eight feet wide. In height, it is between twenty-three feet at a lower end, and then the highest end, twenty-five and a half feet tall. All of this is set on a foot and a half of dunage. The unit is clad in metal, and it can be painted, so we have selected a power-mode white color that we believe will blend well with the sky, as well as the color palette of the exterior building materials. Also, a note about the generator in terms of function and what its necessity is, what it does. The generator will provide backup electrical power in times of blackout situations, and will serve as part of the Con Edison Emergency Response Program when the city is experiencing high loads, for example, in the peak of summer. So, you know, during those times, the building owners will be able to opt to take this building, which again occupies a full city block and nineteen floors of commercial use, off of the grid. So we think that it's an important feature for both the building, its tenants, and the city. Okay, just gonna, so now some more technical drawings. We have an overall plan, existing plan. This is the eighteenth-floor roof highlighted, and then the nineteenth-floor roof is at the center. And here is the proposed location for the generator at the northeast side of the eighteenth-floor roof. It's the unit T-shaped in plan. There are two accessory features that we are proposing as part of this application that go with the generator, a load bank and conduit. I'm gonna go to a more detailed plan to give you a better look at that. So the load bank essentially serves as a dry-run testing center to impose loads on the generator during non-crisis times to just ensure that it's working properly. And the conduit that will run along the base of the roof floor and then up and over onto the nineteenth floor into the building's existing powerhouse, that will tie the, the power into the building, the building systems. The generator is, you can see here in plan, set back from the parapet on the eighteenth floor by sixteen feet. That is the furthest extent that it can be set back at this location because there is an existing historic eight mezzanine constructed across the center of the eighteenth-floor roof. So we've set it back as far as possible to allow some reasonable space before meeting that part of the building's construction. Okay, and now in elevations for overall context, this is the north elevation from Twenty-Seventh Street existing. And there we have our proposed, so the generator here at the center and the load bank and conduit. Moving to the east, this is the east elevation at Eleventh Avenue existing and proposed. The load bank is in the foreground here, and the generator in the background. Okay, and then a more detailed elevation view where you can see the treatment of the conduit, going over the parapet, the generator again, fifty feet, fifty feet by about twenty, just under twenty-six feet tall on a foot and a half of dunage, and the load bank is fourteen feet, but set back significantly such that it's not visible. Okay, and then aerial view, our Axon view for better context again. We mocked up the generator and load bank volumes to study the actual visibility from the surrounding streets. And what you're looking at here is actually, or what we're proposing here today, rather, is actually smaller, shorter than what we originally planned and presented to the community board when we met with them anticipating this review. There were concerns about the height and visibility of the unit, and we have been able to work out reducing the dunage of the unit by sixteen inches. And so the black banding that you're seeing at the top of this mock-up, and you'll see in our view study photos, it's actually, the overall height is at the bottom of that band. The band indicates the sixteen inches we're able to take off the top. We studied a large range of views, and we've broken them down into view studies going to the north and then to the south for this presentation. But generally, the unit is not visible in close proximity to the building from either the east or west sides, and it's not visible in the, what we consider the iconic view sheds of the building over the primary facade or from the west-side waterfront park. It does become more visible as you move further away from the building, and shorter buildings and vacant lots in the foreground give you more open visibility. This map you can see is for the northern view shed, and the key tags in yellow indicate where the unit is not visible, and the key tags in white indicate where it is visible. So that's views two through eight, and I'll walk you through that. Okay, so here we are at the north side of the building at Eleventh Avenue and Twenty-Seventh Street, close proximity to the building where the unit is not visible. We are now at Eleventh Avenue and Twenty-Ninth Street, or excuse me, that's Twenty-Eighth Street, and just a peek of the top of the visi, of the unit is visible. This is the mock-up view. In this view, we have rendered the unit, and then here's a very zoomed view to give you an idea of what you're looking at. Okay, and now we're at Twenty-Ninth Street and Eleventh Avenue. Again, similarly to those historic photos of the water towers, as you move further away from the building, this area of the roof does become more visible over the shorter buildings. So here's our mock-up and the rendered view of what the generator will look like in context. We are moving down the center of the block between Eleventh and Twelfth Avenue. This is actually on Thirtieth Street. Okay. Now we're moving up the east side further north. We're at about Thirty-First Street and Eleventh Avenue behind the High Line here, some new construction that's coming up just before you get to Hudson Yards, and there's just a sliver visible, as you can see in that zoom view. We've moved to the furthest extent that we studied north, at Thirty-First Street between Eleventh and Twelfth Avenues, slightly visible through the brush. And now we're going to begin coming down the west side of the building. This is at Twelfth Avenue and Thirty-Fourth Street. I'll move to the next view to explain that as we move further south and further west of the building, the, the building volumes, the higher nineteenth-floor roof begins to obscure the close-up eighteen, the east side of the eighteenth-floor roof. So as you can see here, we start to cut off visibility of the unit as we're at Twenty-Ninth Street and Twelfth Avenue. Okay, and now we're back within the historic district at, between Twenty-Eighth and Twenty-Ninth Streets on Twelfth Avenue, not visible. Twenty-Seventh Street and Twelfth Avenue, not visible. I'll move more quickly through the following views, but this is the view study map from the south. Again, the same principle remains that it's not visible in close-up views and in the waterfront park, and more visible as you move further to the south. Okay, so we're at Pier sixty, Pier sixty-six, looking west, not visible. Okay, now we're at Twelfth Avenue and Twenty-Sixth Street, looking at the primary facade here on Twenty-Sixth Street, not visible. Okay, and now we're at Twelfth Avenue and about Twenty-Fourth Street, not visible. Pier sixty-two and Twenty-Second Street, not visible. The furthest extent that you can go on Pier sixty-two, looking north, a peek of the unit becomes visible. I just want to emphasize that this view is a very zoomed view. This is the vantage point that we're looking at. Okay, and this is at the top of Chelsea Piers at Twenty-Second Street and Twelfth Avenue. And the end of Chelsea Piers, Seventeenth Street and Twelfth Avenue, slightly visible, it becomes less, not visible, excuse me, as you move with the street grid, it turns. And then as we move closer to the building, again, Eleventh Avenue and Twenty-Third Street, minimally visible. Okay, Eleventh Avenue and Twenty-Fourth Street becomes not visible again. And again, close up on the building, we're now at Twenty-Sixth Street and Eleventh Avenue, not visible. So in summary, we feel that the application is appropriate for the proposed design because it will not detract from the historic character of the building. We studied kind of these iconic views of the building historic shown next to our mock-up view in comparison, where the unit will not be visible and will not detract from the impression of the historic building. And then another historic, kind of iconic view from Twelfth Avenue looking northwest. We've taken cues from the original design of the building, and that the water towers' historic utility features were located at the north side of the nineteenth-floor roof, and thus our proposed location is at the north side of the roof on the eighteenth floor where space is available. And we've shown you a range of views, but again, the visibility is really at far distances from the historic property, and then they're in context with other historic and LPC-approved utility features. So overall, we hope you can find this application appropriate and look forward to your questions and comments.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Right, let me see, I don't think we have any questions. So let's move to public testimony, and then we may have questions after that. So if you're in the meeting and would like to testify, please raise your virtual hand so we can tell you. And I will turn it over to Anthony to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. We do have some sign-ups for this item. First, I will bring in Pamela Wolf from Community Board Four. Pamela, you should be in the meeting.
There we go. Got me?
Yes, we can hear you and see you.
Good afternoon, Chair Carroll and Commissioners. I am Pamela Wolf, a public member of Community Board Four's Chelsea Land Use Committee. My testimony quotes the board's advisory letter to the commission. The Stare at Lehigh Building is Chelsea's most prominent twentieth-century landmark. Historically, the building's rooftop equipment, including original water tanks, has been strategically concentrated on the north side of the building's twentieth-floor roof, visually continuing the three-story vertical emphasis of five paired-window bays on the building's north facade from eighteenth to, to the twentieth floors immediately below the tanks. This contained vertical facade treatment, which contrasts with the building's overwhelmingly horizontal fenestration, occurs again on the south facade for the full length of the building in east-west alignment with the smaller upper-floor section on the north. Here, penthouse levels rise above the twentieth floor that shield the water tanks and other equipment from view. This gives the dominant flowing horizontality of the rest of the building a clean roof line. It's critically important figure-ground relationship with the open sky is left continuous, like the signature ribbon windows below. This was clearly a fundamental design intention of the original architect. Thankfully, it has been preserved for the ninety years since the building's construction. Our review of this rooftop mock-up finds that the proposed construction would be clearly visible from both the north and south. The mock-up can also be seen from the west-side highway, the High Line, and the Hudson River Park. This visibility would not be mitigated by a background of roof bulkheads or taller neighboring buildings. It would unacceptably detract from the building's originally intended fluid skyline. The applicant's architect has stated that the proposed generator and load bank would support not just code-required emergency systems, but operate, but operational continuity for certain tenants, and would consolidate generators currently distributed throughout the building to address floodplain and noise issues. This would be, this would also free up rentable floor area. We note that some of these elective, are elective considerations for profitability rather than true need, and do not justify the adverse visual impact of a rooftop, roofed-up generator with a profile way over seventy feet, seventeen feet tall and fifty feet long. CB four recommends denial of this application. We suggest locating equipment within the building below roof level. CB four has been pleased to work with the applicant on a number of applications and has been impressed with the applicant's respectful approaches to preserve the Stare at Lehigh Building's historic integrity. We look forward to reviewing a revised solution for the generator and related equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I will bring in Kelly Carroll. You should be able to unmute your microphone now.
Great, thank you. Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. HTC believes the neutral gray hue rather than the proposed white is more appropriate for the accretions at the top of this individual landmark. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any more sign-ups, and I do not see any additional hands raised for this item.
Sir?
I think, Sarah?
Might be some kind of delay.
Oh, I think she's connecting to audio. Yeah, she's connecting now. Yeah, she's connecting now.
But I'll just say ahead of time that there are no additional comments.
So I got an email from Sarah that she is having some sound problems, and perhaps Fred, you could take over?
Thank you, Fred, that's what you're talking about.
Okay, did, Rich, did we have a community board resolution?
The member of the community board already spoke. We don't have, I don't have any additional written comments.
Okay, thank you.
I'm back on, if you wanna, if you can hear me now, I just, I'm using a different speaker. Sorry about that. Okay, are there any final questions for the applicant? Okay, I don't think we have any questions. So let's move to close the hearing, Commissioners.
Sarah, before you do, I think, I think the applicant wanted to respond. Is that okay?
All right, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yes, I just, I just wanted to say a final word that we really appreciate the community board's review and feedback. And in response to their comments, we did reduce the height of the unit by 16 inches, and that did have a positive impact on the views from the south, which they were concerned about, and so we appreciate them sharing that with us.
All right, thank you. All right, so if we don't have any other questions, I'm starting to request to unmute all of you, so if you can accept that, we'll make a motion to close the hearing. And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion, motion, so moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing is closed. And Commissioner Bland, I want to thank you for stepping in there when I got locked out. And I'm gonna reward you by asking if you'd like to leave the discussion.
Sure, why not? You know, we're, we're, we're seeing this minimally, I think, above the, the cornice line of this horizontal building, this great building. But we're seeing it with other things, like the, the water tanks and so forth. So I, I believe I can accept, accept the proposal as it is. I would suggest, though, that white is, I mean, in this day, that this picture is taken, white might be the right thing, but on other kind of days, it might not. And traditionally, I think we've tended toward a grayish color for rooftop accretions, and I think that would be more appropriate.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Yeah, I agree. I concur with Fred and agree with the color, too. Gray would be a little better.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree and concur.
Okay. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yep, I agree too.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I do as well, it's appropriate.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree.
And Commissioner Chapin?
I agree, it's appropriate.
Commissioner Devonshire? And Commissioner Chen?
Likewise, yeah.
Okay, so we're all in agreement on this one. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you read the motion to approve it with the modification that they work with the staff to just adjust the tone of the call?
In the matter of LPC 21-06745, 601 West 26th Street, the Starrett Lehigh Building, an individual landmark, and also in the West Chelsea Historic District. The application is to install a rooftop generator and screening. I note that the building's style, skeletal materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the West Chelsea Historic District. I recommend approval, noting that the work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the generator and related screening will be simply designed and will be set back from the facade to help it remain a discreet presence, that the generator will only be visible from public thoroughfares at a distance in the context of other utilitarian rooftop accretions, and that the work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the, of the individual landmark or the West Chelsea Historic District. And I recommend that the applicant work with the staff to determine a more, a more neutral finish in the gray range.
Great. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
Right, that's approved with that modification. Thank you very much. And that concludes our day. Thank you all, Commissioners, for your dedication and commitment, as always. And thank you for bearing with my technical difficulties this afternoon. And Fred, thank you for being at the ready to jump in. All right, we'll see you all next week.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Bye-bye.